Good evening. Let's call this meeting to order with beginning with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a motion to for approval of the present agenda?
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Okay, so all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. So now we get to our public comment section where the purpose of this public comment period is for the Board of Education to hear comments that are specifically related to items included on this evening's agenda. During this public comment period, which will not exceed 20 minutes in total duration and three minutes per speaker, the Board of Education will hear comments from students, parents, employees, district residents, district property and business owners. Other individuals who have received prior approval in accordance with CCD policy 1510 will also be heard at this time. Is there anyone here who would like to speak?
My name is Jennifer Kellier. I have three young students in the school. They are new to the school this year to the pre-K program. I did see on the agenda something was related to hiring a bus attendant and a couple other things. I'm having a lot of trouble with the events that have happened recently at school with the bus specifically. Not only just the bus, but also the whatever it's called, the attendance system that calls parents when their child's absent, that sort of thing. The fact that a such a significant event occurred with the child being left on a school bus all day long was not communicated to anybody that any sort of incident occurred is very discouraging to me. And I know that a lot of other parents feel the same way. Yeah, I mean, I didn't find out till a week later. And we had different multiple bus drivers because my kids were on the same bus that this occurred on. Had no idea why. I couldn't get them to get on the, almost couldn't get them to get on the bus the one morning when a new person came to pick them up. I mean, they're, you know, they're very young and they're just starting this routine and I don't even know what to tell them what's going on. Not only that, it was sort of taken out of the parents' hands to decide for themselves if they felt it was safe for their children to continue riding the bus or whatnot by not telling us anything about it. This kind of conveyed to me that some of it was privacy reasons, et cetera. We decided not to startle other parents, but I think this is something that should have been absolutely brought to parents' attention. Nobody asked who the child was or where, you know, anything like that. It was about what happened and why it happened and how is it not going to happen again? Not only the school bus, there was a failure in the system there. And the thing is, the the whole thing with the button on the back of the bus that is supposed to alarm so that the driver is more or less forced to walk to the back of the bus and check to make sure there's no children remaining on the bus has been flawed for a very long time and it's been known. Yet, nothing has been done about it as far as I'm aware because it still was able to happen where a once the bus is turned off, which is a likely case that occurred, the bus was turned off while they were waiting, you know, at the MED or wherever to drop off children in the drop off zone. Possibly the bus was, then the bus was, if the bus was turned back on, if the driver never signaled their stop sign flashers, which they would not in a parking lot at the school, the button no longer triggers. It triggers when you turn off the bus after your flashes have been on, but now, and this has been a known thing. And it's also a likely scenario that a child turned off the alarm in the back. I don't know for sure, but I know this has been a problem in this system for a long time and it was sort of possibly ignored because nothing's been done about it to prevent this fault or loophole in the system. Not only that, but where's our other, you know, failsafe? Oh, if the parents had been notified, hey, your child's not in school today, they would have said, what do you mean? And that child would have been found within a reasonable amount of time, not what it was, what, six hours later? I think that's a pretty pretty egregious occurrence that's really not, I don't feel like that's being treated very seriously also. The bus driver was at fault, the system the fault, the school district is at fault. Who's checking in the system? We didn't know wasn't up and running for days. How was that not checked? How was that not something important? How was there not? You know, I feel like that we are instead of being proactive, we're being reactive at the school and it's really, it's obviously becoming a significant issue. Look what happened. If some of these issues have been looked at beforehand when they were known to be issues, this may have never happened. And also the communication of the parents, I really don't understand how it was thought that it was a good idea to not tell parents this. I mean, it's pretty, this is a pretty significant thing that happened. And how are we supposed to trust that our children are going to school when, are going to school and are going to be safe and taken care of? When, when something does happen, it was a terrible mistake, yes. But then sort of hiding it from everyone and not telling anybody about it. How am I supposed to trust you when you're not even telling me things? You know, I shouldn't, I shouldn't be finding out, you know, from a customer at the restaurant where I work a week later that this occurred.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for bringing that to your, to the board.
Just ask a question with it.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
If it would help, I'm happy to make a point of order here. Is that helpful?
That would be fine.
So as a rule, first of all, we love participation in these meetings and we always want to hear. And we take all public comment really seriously. We do, we are constrained in time. And so we set aside these two blocks of comment. One at the beginning of the meeting, which is for today's agenda. And we try to get through the regular business agenda as fast as possible so that staff members that have to stay late, they've been here all day, they can leave. And then at the end of the meeting, we have an open public comment for items not on tonight's agenda. So while there, while there is a a motion to appoint some bus attendants on tonight's agenda, we are looking in this first comment block for comments that relates specifically to the exact motions on tonight's agenda so we can move through it quickly. And then when we get, you know, when we get to second public comment, we then receive open public comment. And at that time, we just want to be conscious of everyone's time and make sure that we keep these comments to to three minutes so we can give everyone time to speak. And then in addition to that, while the board and district does sometimes respond, they don't respond during meetings to questions. Does that sound good?
Yep, that's correct. Just want to say that I was, the question I was going to have was, I was going to request that possibly in the next meeting, it be brought up of how are we, you know, working towards fixing these things and, you know, what's being done, what's planned on being done, that sort of thing. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you for coming. Next, next we will be heading into board member comment.
Before we continue, did we, was there just that one person? Do we have?
Oh, that's true. Is there any virtual hands?
There are no, there are three attending and there are currently no hands up.
There are three, three attending virtually and there are currently no hands up.
So we could move into board member comment.
I'm excited that all the children are so excited about the sports season kicking off. And they're clearly like trying to figure out how to get rides to games and they're talking about all the games after. And they're, it's just really great to see that, that energy in the student body. So that is something I wanted to note.
Anybody else? I'll let you get going.
Thank you. Homecoming is this weekend. So that's always a nice event for the community. Looking forward to that.
Just say that I want to thank you for coming to speak to us. And I want you to know that we're listening to you. And I just couldn't let you leave without thanking you. Okay?
We have this, we've never used it. I apologize for being tardy. I'm also a coach, so we just played our game. Okay, moving on to building and department reports, we have a brief introduction to the American Institute of Research Personnel. Dr. Root, I believe you're going to introduce them.
Sure. So Deb, can you maybe, we'll have everybody come up along here. Really pleased to introduce a research practice partnership that we have with the University of Albany and also the American Institutes of Research. Who you see on the end here is Dr. Tammy Cozy. And next to her is Dr. Beth Howard Brown. I'm getting your name correct. And Dr. Kristen Wilcox. So I thought maybe we'd start with just a little bit of what is a research practice partnership? And then briefly speak to our, our work and then we'll, we'll send them on their way.
Good evening. Within the context of the work that we're doing at American Institutes for Research, we have a COVID and education initiative, which is a research practice partnership network. The research practice partnerships, as we envision them, are solutions focused, community based initiatives that bring together local educators, researchers and members of the community. And we do so to envision together research possibilities that will change the trajectory of students and communities' lives. We hope to change those trajectories in ways that are transformative for the good of the students and the larger communities, particularly in the aftermath and, and some would say the continuing pandemic. And so in short, that's what we're doing. And we are delighted to have had the opportunity to work with Chatham. And we had a lovely visit today. We got a chance to see students, faculty members and administrators. And this district and the schools that were represented therein have been very, very delightful. It was just really informative and we thank you for inviting us.
You go to the next slide. One more.
Okay, yeah. Thank you so much for having us. I'm Kristen Wilcox. I'm an associate professor in educational policy and leadership at the University of Albany. And I'm the director of a project called New York Kids. And we connected with Chatham a few years ago, so we're really happy to kind of throw what we can in your direction in terms of organizing these kinds of events where we can connect with other educators in our state and across the country through air. New York Kids is really functioning to do our primary work of research around New York State. So actually Lisa's been on some site visits with me in the past and Fred, I think you're aware of our research too. Our, our core research is around finding pockets of excellence in our public schools in New York State. So we've been bringing what we know about promising practices, definitely with this focus on equity to bear on some of the things that you're, you're doing here in Chatham. We also partnered with Tech Valley High School to share ideas, generate kind of innovative ideas about what we can be doing in the future. Most of our focus and the work between Tech Valley and Chatham has been trying to kind of unpack the idea of belongingness and how you promote a sense of belongingness for children, youth, families, educators, especially as we're coming out of a very difficult time. And in some places and some, for some people, very traumatic time during the pandemic. So I'm very happy to be here, right in your backyard. So we are always around here to kind of be that conduit to bring research to bear on what you've got going on here.
So there's a lot of work that we've done in the space with these two organizations and our goal is to present that. It's not, not for tonight. We just had this opportunity where we're really fortunate to have a site visit and that we could have everybody in person. And very selfishly, I asked for it to be a board night so that you could, you could see some of the people that we partner with. So they very graciously agreed to, to say hello. So with that, I don't know if anyone has any, any brief questions for them? What? Well, I don't, I want to try to keep it tight to five. So when we do the full presentation, we'll talk about some of the work that, that we've done. But any, any comments or questions for our, our group before we move on?
Yeah, I have a question. For, I know Dr. Wilcox, I don't know the other two's names. I'm sorry I did not write them down. So your focus is really the aftermath of COVID. What do you find to be the drivers? Like, what's really?
So we started this work in the midst of COVID. And what we've looked at across the districts that we have seven districts that we are engaged with across four states. And we looked at innovations that were being employed, but that really had not been systematized. And we also looked for opportunities where there were stubborn challenges that needed to be addressed. And, and we brought research to bear in those experiences. And so we found across the board that students have, in many ways, needed outlets for expression that kind of dipped during the pandemic. And so in our research practice partnerships have interrogated their own hunches in the way of hypotheses. And they've used data to explore those. In some instances, they're finding that the dips were really within their control. Things that they could change, maybe counselor education, for example, having counselors who needed a little bit more support and a little bit more guidance in light of the pandemic. And so a range of possibilities exist, but those are just a few.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. We greatly appreciate the update.
I just wanted to add, I'm, I'm happy to see you here and thank you for inviting them.
Thank you.
Thank you for your hospitality.
Now, moving on to the audit report, we have Weston Co CPAs.
I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Chuddy to do the introductions.
Great, thank you.
We have our auditor with us.
Yeah, we have Amy Pedrick. So this is our external audit that's done every year. And then she gives us the report and then we send it out to the state. Take it away, Amy.
All right, sounds good. So good evening, everybody. You all received, I think it was on your board docs, a PDF of your final audit report. I did meet with your audit committee last week and went over the document in depth, quite, quite in depth. So I'm only going to just talk about a couple highlights, but then leave it open for any questions. Just to kind of summarize what we do as your auditor, we, we come to the district twice for the year. We come early May or June timeframe. We do some risk assessment. We test your controls. We look at what's going on in the business office. Then that kind of drives what we do when we come in August to do our final testing. When we come in August, we get the books and records from management. We verify the numbers, we confirm with third parties, state education department, banks, things like that. We do significant testing on the balances, balances, and the culmination of that is your audit report. The format of the report really is set up the same as it has been in the past. The most important pages would be really your independent auditors report. It's the first couple pages of the audit. And in that, we say that the financial statements present fairly. So that's a clean, unmodified opinion. And it's the highest opinion we give as a profession. And what that's saying is the books and records are in really good shape. When we come, we're given everything. We're not proposing any journal entries. Everything's in good working order. So that's a clean opinion. Then after that, we have the management's discussion and analysis. That's just a few brief, about 10 pages to be able to provide a snapshot of what happened at the district during the year. It allows management to put some narrative into the financial statements, talk about what could affect the future of the district, things that are, things that are happening that'll affect going forward. And then we have the financial statements themselves. They're presented in two different formats. The first being the long-term look. It's not really how the district operates. It takes into account all your long-term assets, your buildings, your buses, your equipment, and as well your long-term liabilities. Things like your other post-employment benefit liability. That's the liability that your actuary calculates and your health and dental insurance estimated out into the future for your current employees and retirees. So that's a long-term view of the, of the district. Then there is the shorter term, the modified accrual, and those are the funds. So those statements have your general fund, your special age fund, your library fund, et cetera. And those are really how the district operates daily. And those are really the numbers you'd want to look at in terms of where we are with our general fund and where our fund balance is and what our assets are at the end of the year. Then we have our supplement, our, our footnotes to the financial statements. Those get, those give some more information on the district. It explains the different funds. It explains the different reserves. It gives some more support for some of those long-term numbers in the financials. So there are just more pages from some more explanation. Then we have some supplemental information that's required to be in there or required by either the governmental accounting standards board, state ed or OSC. And then we have one other audit, which is your audit of the federal programs. So because the district spends more than $750,000 of federal money, we do a compliance audit with the grants. Your grants have been substantially higher as they have been in all districts over the last couple of years with the Chris and the Art funding, the COVID funding that's happened. We'll see that kind of start to slow down, but you will still be over that $750,000 threshold. We had no findings associated with those grant audits as well. It was a clean opinion, no significant deficiencies, no material weaknesses. And we also issue a third opinion, which is our report on the internal controls over financial reporting and compliance. And again, we had no findings there. Like I mentioned earlier, the books and records are in great shape. Your controls are operating and operating well, so we don't have any issues to, to report to the board there as well. And then after that, we have the audit of the extra classroom activity funds. So New York State Education Department requires those funds to be audited separately. Those are presented on a cash basis. So when the money comes in, it's a revenue and when it goes out, it's an expense. And this audit just lists out all the clubs that the district has and the, the ending balances with those clubs. And then one thing we don't have in the financial statement is a management letter. Sometimes we have had in the past, things that would never rise to a level of a finding or modification to the opinion, things that would improve controls or improve efficiencies. This year, we don't have any of those comments to report. Everything really is in great shape. And we didn't have any issues that we found when we did all of our testing. So that is the one thing that's not in the report this year. So. And that's a very quick overview of just what's in the audit. I didn't know if any of the board members had any questions specific to the audit or if any of the audit or finance committee members had any follow-up from our meeting the other week.
Well, we met in committee and as a group, you know, we, we had our community representative, Dawn was there. We had Beth Hoover and we all agreed to recommend the audit for adoption. So only comment we had, clean finding this year.
Okay, doesn't sound like anybody else has any questions.
Before you go on to the next item, I'd like just to recommend that we bump up the C-Plaque report. We have some lovely people here to provide that. And oversight was, we should have put that probably next before Mr. Chuddy's
Sure.
Report. So if, if, if that's not a problem, Debbie, can we just switch that? Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you so much. I know you've come, come a long way to be with us, so it's good to see you in person. There were some years where we had to bring you in virtually, but that's not the case anymore. So thank you.
No problem. Thank you. Have a great evening.
So we will move on to the C-Plaque report.
The motion's later on in the agenda.
That's later on, Matt.
Yeah, this is just a presentation.
Yeah. We now would like to introduce John McGowan from the C-Plaque Committee, our chairperson, who will give you a brief, I think it was about last spring, where I know we get our monthly reports from our board members who are on the C-Plaque, but the board had said, you know, we've never met John. We'd like to put a name to the face, or at least some people don't know who you are. And then we said, great, we'll bring him back in the fall and and talk about some of the awesome, wonderful things that are happening in our library. It's so impressive what we've got going on.
Sure.
So I'm going to bring up, it wasn't like, I'm sorry.
First slide, yeah.
You know what, correction before John, Mike is bringing to our attention, Debbie, that that is our 21. That Matt is usually right.
Okay, yes. Can I have a motion to accept the auditor's report?
Motion?
Second.
Any further questions on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Fish and Mr. Chuddy. Now with further ado, my apologies, John.
Okay.
I'm going to bring up your, your presentation.
Bring up the first one, yeah, thanks. Well, thanks very much for giving me the opportunity to come and talk to you about Chatham Public Library Advisory Committee, as we call it, C-Plaque. So I appreciate that chance. I also want to, I want to forget, I don't want to forget to thank Amanda Merck and Kate Clark over at the library who prepared these slides. You wouldn't want to see the slides if I prepared them, so I really appreciate, appreciate their help. Next slide. Okay, the, the C-Plaque was established in 2011 by the BOE and the superintendent at that time. The library, public library is under the school district and that's by act of the legislature back in the early 1900s. 1910, I think. I'm not sure about that. But the library employees are part of the school district. And so the whole thing falls under the supervision of the superintendent and the BOE. It was felt in 2011 that maybe there needs to be a closer look at these, at these activities over at the library. Not that there was anything wrong, but that the board and the superintendent's office really didn't have a chance to give any kind of close supervision to what's going on on a day-to-day basis. C-Plaque provides a greater oversight to answer that need. And it's empowered to make recommendations to the BOE and the superintendent. In other words, anything that has to be approved, isn't approved by C-Plaque, but we make recommendations to the, either the superintendent and ultimately to the board. Okay, next slide. The membership. There are five voting community members. Me, of course. And then, then we have Jane Hershawzer and Sheila Stump. And today with me, we have Nancy Jackson and Jean Northrup. They were kind enough to provide me support tonight in case I forgot to come. No. The five community members serve a three-year term and may apply to remain on the committee. Some people serve two terms. Some people only serve one. Some people serve every term there is going, so. There are also two board of education members. Mario Faxen, of course, has been a longtime representative of the board on C-Plaque. We just lost Beth Hoover and I'd like to publicly thank Beth for her efforts on the committee. Very much appreciated. And I understand that Dawn Friedman has been appointed to, to take Beth's place. So that's very, very encouraging. The, the, the efforts of the BOE members on C-Plaque have been wonderful over the years. And it's, it's really a good working relationship, I think. The board members basically keep us citizens out of the, out of getting messed up on anything. So they're very good. It's interesting to note that over the years, there's been 14 different community members who've actually been a member of C-Plague. So that's a good representation of the, in the, in the 12 years from the community. And there's been seven different board of ed members on the committee. So again, it's, it's a good, it's not like it's a, it's a club where people just keep showing up. There's also three non-voting members and that's Amanda Merk, the library director, Mike Chuddy, who is the superintendent's representative, and Damaris Botwick, who's the friends of the Chatham Public Library representative. The the superintendent, of course, is always welcome to come to the meetings, and once in a while, the superintendent does come. But Mike gives continuity and it represents the school at all the meetings, so that's good. Next slide, please. Okay, what's the role of C-Plaque? It's actually to provide a general oversight of the library. And we do this through directors' monthly reports and also through regular meetings. Usually about six meetings a year. Sometimes we add one or two if there's something urgent going on. It's important to remember that C-Plaque does not try to run the library. C-Plaque has an advisory role, not a governing role. We bylaws say that we can't even ask somebody to get us a book, you know? We're just like the public in in terms of the operation of the day-to-day library business. So that's a that's a an issue that sometimes people who have come on C-Plaque don't understand at first. They think, well, we're going to we're going to direct the library, but that's not it at all. Next slide. What are our duties? Okay, in concert with the library director, we formulate and make recommendations on the following areas. Policies. There's about 12 different library policies. These are a subset of the school district policy. They're in the manual, and periodically we review those policies and look for things that have to be changed. Budget. The library director and Mike Chuddy prepare the budget every year, and C-Plaque has a review task in that in that effort. Let's see, strategic planning. We're right at the outset, we're going to begin our strategic planning update process to get a new five-year plan in place. We were a little bit delayed because we had a director who left last year, and so we had to give the new director a chance to get up to speed. But we're we're starting to work on that. Book challenges. If there's a challenge, C-Plaque's responsible for doing research and writing a report of recommendation to the board, how to handle those challenges. And any other issue that may require BOE or superintendent approval. In other words, if something comes up and the board or the superintendent needs more information, we're going to, we're going to provide whatever we can in that contest, context. Another role, assist the library director with community outreach. Last year, we conducted several listening sessions or or focus groups, if you will, with the community members in preparation for the strategic planning. And anytime there's some kind of an outreach that needs to be done, the members volunteer to help with that effort. Next slide. Another thing we do is evaluate the performance of the library director. The library director obviously evaluates the performance of her staff, but we evaluate the performance of the library director. We established some years ago some standards which were approved by the board at that time, by the board at that time. And we use those to review the performance over the year with the with the director, of the director. So we give a thumbnail to the incumbent director in January. And then in June, in time for the general school district evaluation process, we give a a complete formal evaluation. The other thing on there, it's 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 a role we play. It says interview candidates and recommend appointment when the director position becomes vacant. That's that's a duty that's had various scenarios over the years. But right now, in the past two times, it involves the director or I mean, the chair of the C-Plaque with Mike and Sal sit down with the candidates along with one or two members of the library staff. And we, it's very efficient that we can interview the person and and come to a conclusion right there. So that's all I have, and I'm willing to, willing and eager to listen to your questions.
While you're formulating them, I just wanted another shout out to Mr. Chuddy, who does, who does, is my representative on the committee. And Kennedy doesn't know this, but he's a much better representative because he he can come up with the money. So you're you're in good hands with Mike. And you know, and Amanda, we're just so fortunate to have an amazing director. I've been here. This is our third director, and the work that's coming out of the library is so impressive with the types of programs and diversity of programs that we're seeing. It's just, I I'm so pleased with with their work. So thank everyone involved, and thank you for the generous gift of your time to serve on the C-Plaque board. We greatly appreciate it.
I just want to make one comment. I've been with John since 2012, so since you started in '11, we've been together the whole time. And I just want to thank John for all, you know, his work and leadership and really, you know, all the people that have come and gone, the directors. We've had members, but you, you know, kept the ship going in a good direction. So I want to thank you for all your hard work.
He's also the mystery voice of the phone system at the library. So when you call, press one, that is, so he has multi-tasks.
And I do want to, I also want to say that I'm sorry I'm not on the committee anymore, obviously. But more than that is I'm sorry I'm going to be missing all the preschool programs now because Grayson entered preschool himself this.
Oh.
So he's going to preschool instead of to the library Grammy.
Yeah, that's great.
But they have phenomenal preschool programs run by Becky.
Oh, I didn't even get into the programs. They're just amazing. The director is amazing, the things she comes up with, and we're very, very pleased. We have to treat her right so she stays.
And we'll have Amanda back during budget season, February, March, to give you her annual report, which is required. But this was kind of an opportunity for you to get just kind of a closer, more focused view of of the committee itself.
Hey, John, first of all, it's my fault you're here because I really, I I wanted to meet you in the room when I was president, and so thanks for coming.
Yeah.
I, yeah, I'd like to reiterate all the, my my observation that the the quality of the you know, it's it's a lot of new programming work that's churning out of that tiny organization is pretty amazing. And the community impact is is really great. And we get, we get reports from the library director, but you've had, you've had some continuity in your position. And I'm I'm curious if you have any observations about maybe, let's call it medium term, where we've been and where we're going, and not just what is the library doing new this year? But what do you see the role of your group in the community and steering that? Like, what? We we have to figure out how to resource your program, right? So that's why I wanted to hear it from.
A lot of, a lot of it depends on the library director we have at the time. And we're very excited, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. We're very excited about this director that we have now. I've never, in my 12 years, I've never seen anyone go out for grants as much as as Amanda has. She's really great at that, and her interaction with the community is phenomenal, too. So we can build on that. And that's one of the key components, I think, of the strategic plan that we're that we're starting to work on. To get more involvement with the community, not, I mean, in prior years, we've been trying to get the community aware of what we have. But now we're trying to think about the way the community can contribute to what we will have. So that's that's of difference and focus, I think.
Well, I appreciate that that focus and good luck.
Well, I just appreciate the support of the board, and this was a new concept 12 years ago, and we've we've tried to go make it a living, breathing committee, as we always say. And I would like to thank not only Nancy and Jean, but the other members over the years. It's really been a a rewarding experience for me. Although this may be my last term, I don't know.
Oh.
Getting a little old.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Can we amend the term length here?
There may not be a C-Plaque next year.
Okay, anything else?
No, but on behalf of the board, thank you for the work you do, all of you. I think that our library has a reputation that that goes well beyond the bounds of our community, and that's in large part, if not almost entirely, as a result of the C-Plaque. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Next up, we have the, Mr. Chuddy will update the board on the district's response to the Office of State Controller's recent audit. In just a moment.
Night.
It's Mr. Chuddy.
All right. So before I start out, I have our treasurer, Pat Giuliano, here. I want to personally thank her for all her work on both the external audit that was just approved with the clean audit, which was great because there was no findings, and then all the work on the state audit, and it was six months of two people every day asking for so many things. So I thank Pat. And I also want to thank the business staff in general for all their their assistance with this. I'll be on the next slide. So pretty much, the way state audits work, usually it's five to five to seven, five to eight years, they'll come out to your district. They try to hit, you know, hit 700 districts in the state. The last time they came out was 2015. And then so it's been seven years. So they came last school year, and it was about six to, I think, six or seven months they were here every day, two guys. Every day, you know, checking over everything. So if you look on the slide, they looked over pretty much everything in the business office, purchasing, information technology, payroll, banking, internal controls, transportation, cafeteria, inventory, fixed assets. Pretty much everything that the business office does. They looked at a three-year period. They looked over, you know, numerous bills, numerous, you know, checked pretty much everything. So the good news is there was no findings of fraud or malfeasance. And actually, there was really nothing much to find in all of those areas. So what they did write us up on is the same thing they did in 2015 was our focus on on our our financial reserves, so our savings that we have. And one other note before I go to the next slide, so in 2015, around 2012, 2013, Cuomo publicly stated that, you know, districts have savings accounts. Why should we give state aid? If they have, they should use their savings accounts, you know, and then we could give more aid. So they went around and they wrote up, I don't know, there's 700 districts, probably a few hundred districts that were financially sound with, you know, had savings. They wrote them all up saying you shouldn't have your savings, pretty much, you know, give it back to the taxpayer or pay it down. Fortunately for us in 2015, and same as now, we disagreed. We respectfully disagreed with that audit. Numerous districts did that. The ones that did not do that, that gave the money back, had serious troubles when we had some financial crisis a couple of years after. And they either had to lay off a lot of staff or try to raise taxes 15, 20%. So thankfully, we didn't follow that advice, and we're not going to follow that advice again. So I'll go through what the, what the next slide, what the findings were. So I saw, I pretty much what happened is when the audit came out, we did about a seven-page rebuttal. And we don't, you know, some of the stuff we're going to review and find our reserve plan. So we are going to look at parameters and things, but we did have a rebuttal to the audit. And then we have a two-pager that's going to be on a corrective action plan, but I'm just summing the two-pager up right here in a couple of slides. So audit recommendation one, we should adopt realistic appropriation estimates, so expenses and the amount of fund balance we're using. So as we stated last time, this was written up in 15, we look at every line, we build, rebuild the budget every year, but we build in contingencies in our budget. Which is sound fiscal planning. So the contingencies allow the district to be prepared for unforeseeable increases, example, special ed, utility, health insurance. And we also have reserves for some expenses if we have major emergencies in our financially hard time. So we build contingency in the budget and we build up reserves per our reserve plan that is officially adopted by the board every December. Next slide. Next thing is to discontinue the practice of appropriating fund balance that is not needed. So as stated in response one, we do build contingencies, so they really don't want us to have any contingent money built in. And then this allows us to be prepared for unforeseeable expenses. And then during difficult financial times, that appropriate balance that we use would be utilized to off, to, you know, to offset significant negative impacts on instruction. So pretty much the way it works, and I stated, and I want to make it clear that we build contingencies in the budget, and this was built years ago. And we put savings that we have to apply to those contingencies. So in essence, there's no impact on taxes. If I took the contingencies out and I took the savings that I applied to offset those contingencies, the taxes would stay the same. So we're just building, you know, we're just preparing for any difficult times, but we're using savings to offset those contingencies. The last part of that slide says any contingent money that is unspent is used to reduce the taxpayer's burden the next year. Or if we have some excess surplus, we put it in reserves to offset future expenses. The next recommendation, so three and four. They basically said we, they thought we didn't have reasonable funding levels for unemployment, insurance, workers' comp, and employment retirement contribution reserves. And we, and then the next four was we should reduce those balances in those reserves. So first point, we stated that there is no requirement for amounts in these reserves. We believe they're reserved appropriately as per our plan. They don't have any targets or maximum amounts allowed by the state. The two that they do have is the TRS Reserve does say you can only have 2% of payroll from the previous year up to 10%. We follow that specifically. And then unreserved fund balance or savings is 4% of the budget, and we follow that right at the 4% line. So we said reserves are saving accounts. They're essential for long-term planning and future financial stability of the district. They have been instrumental for our creating credit, credit rating upgrade that resulted in hundreds of thousands of dollars in interest savings on the capital projects. And we also save hundreds of thousands of dollars on our refinancing of our debt in '18. We'll also be going out with another project this year. So when we issue debt, we want to maintain that high rating. And then the goal of the reserves is to keep taxes at or below the tax cap and maintain our strong educational program for our students. I did state in our plan, we will review the levels of the reserves during the next reserve plan review. So we've been fortunate to be able to keep taxes at or below the tax cap. Actually, half the time in the past 10 years I've been here, 11 years, we've been under the cap. And last year, as we stated, we put some extra savings towards the taxes. So we were, it was the biggest differential between what the tax cap, what we were allowed to go out with and what we went out with. Next slide. So number five, consider whether an insurance reserve is necessary. Actually, we have a very small insurance reserve. I was surprised they wrote this up, but we do believe it's necessary. What we did is we increased our deductible a few years back to $25,000 with our insurance, which resulted in about $8,000 a year in savings. But if we do have, you know, any catastrophes and we had the one, we we have to pay on the deductible. So that's used for this. And the other issue is if cyber insurance costs have increased significantly, and if we have any cyber cyber insurance issues, we can utilize this reserve. So it is part of our long-term financial planning. Next recommendation. So the last one is the same as last in 2015. And and actually, if you look at any districts that are written up for reserves, this is in every single one. It says you could reduce real property taxes, you could increase other reserves, pay off debt or finance one-time expenditures. So what I stated is we we do use the reserves. We use it for the capital project. So we utilize 6.9 million for the 2022 capital project, which offset interest costs for the taxpayer, and we could go out with a much larger project, you know, the 22 million, so we can get a lot of things that we need done at the district. So when we had that surplus and we put money in capital, you know, for savings, we use, we utilize that back to the taxpayer. We did reduce taxes last year. Like I said, we went well under the tax cap by using some of our savings. Finance one-time expenditures. We bought Chromebooks before and other purchases, big, large purchases through our savings. And long-range fiscal planning is really our goal. Ten-year plan, so when we look out 10 years, we project challenging financial times with a limit on the revenue that the district receives. So we will be utilizing reserves to balance our budget and preserve our program. And last point, we stated last time is we have not exceeded the statutory 4% unallocated that we addressed that every year by the board resolution, that the one target they say you can't have over 4%, we never go over that. Next slide. So in summary, you know, I thought actually, you know, the audit was generally positive. They looked at all those areas for six months and really didn't find anything. And And the board and the administration, we deliberately, thoughtfully and publicly, you know, use budget cheating practices that have helped avoid fiscal stress or drastic cuts seen in other districts. You know, with when COVID hit, we were looking at 20% reduction in state aid, about a million dollars, but we didn't have to cut any jobs. Other districts, neighboring districts had to cut jobs because they didn't have the savings to withstand that. The district will carefully consider all recommendations by the state and whether they benefit our taxpayers and maintain the quality of educational program over time. So we'll do that as in finance committee and the board, you know, we'll do what's best for Chatham and our district. And that's all I have tonight on that. Any questions? And we met with audit committee last week and we went through the state audit. And Dave Levo was there, you know, we went through this corrective action plan, what we're going to submit to the state. But any other questions on the state audit?
Chris. Just more of a, I guess it's a question, but you touched on the savings in the Moody's rating. If you could expand on that and explain the benefit and how that actually worked.
Yeah, sure. So our rating was an AA3 on our debt. And, you know, for, actually, it was lower before, but we got it up to AA3. And so the way Moody's Investor Service works, AAA is the best. No school districts have that, but that major, large companies sometimes have that. And then it goes down AA1, 2, 3, then there's B, there's C, you know, then you get into. So one of the things that we worked on, and I worked with the financial advisor when we went out last time, because we built up our reserve plan, we had our reserves. We sold our story of what we've done, you know, we've called Moody's, we have a call, and then they rate our debt. And so if you want a rating upgrade, you got to, you know, kind of put your position forth why. And so we talked about, you know, our, you know, we've had 70% plus the taxpayer supporting our budgets, but the reserve plan was the big thing. The planning, the long-term planning of the reserve plan is what they stated gave us the upgrade. So what that means is when you went out for the debt, our interest rates were much lower. So that's where you save hundreds of thousands of dollars because of that upgrade. And then we refinanced also that year a lot of debt. So we got a lower rate because of that. So that's where we got close to a million dollars in savings the last time.
So that savings, that million dollars in savings is that we're going to see that realized going forward as well, as long as we maintain that.
That's correct. When we issue our new debt, we'll, you know, we won't save a million on the new debt, but we could save hundreds of thousands again on the next, next go run if we can maintain that. Because we're going to be issuing that, you know, debt soon in the next school year. Any other questions?
I'm curious with the current monetary policy, how is that impacting bond rates? I don't understand, you know, are, is this getting more expensive?
Yes, you know, rates have gone up, but actually, when we, when I worked with the financial advisor, A, we have a very strong rating. So the municipal and government debt, which if we maintain that rating, we won't be impacted much. And we did conservative estimates for that to incorporate if there was raises. So we should, we should be fine with that when we go out to issue debt.
And by comparison, it's on the same, it's on the same bell curve, right? We're other schools that don't have that high of a rating are going to see a higher impact than the schools that do have that.
That's correct. A lower rating and to pay more in interest, which the taxpayer has to cover.
Yeah, the entire thing lifts. Everybody's going to go up a little bit, but it's by proportion. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, so we have a motion to accept the district's corrective action plan in response to the controller's report.
Motion.
Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're going to move on to the report from the student representative. How's school going?
It's going good so far. Um, I wanted to start with talking about student government. That's currently up and running. Officers are also being elected right now. I'm pretty sure that the class officers have already been elected, but for the school, we have the secretary, treasurer, vice president and president. So that's currently happening right now. And I believe that people will be, I guess, running currently and campaigning around the schools.
Is that grade level associated? So president has to be a senior?
Yeah, I believe the president has to be a senior, but there's also the class officers, which have already been elected. So also with homecoming is spirit week. So we have the different themed days throughout the week that we've been doing. Like PJ Day, Twin Day, Soccer Mom Cookout Dad Day, Ken and Barbie, and then Black and Red for the Friday. And then the homecoming game will be on Friday with the other sports games being on the weekend. And then the, on Saturday night, there's going to be the dance. So for clubs too, there's going to be advertising during lunch. I saw some of the boards out, fold-out boards for different clubs that people can join. And there's also going to be a club fair in the library. And I believe that's going to be out on Thursday night when there's the open house for parents. So students and parents can go to the library and look at the different clubs that are available. Um, and then
That's a, that was kind of a big issue for you, right? Like that was getting kids involved in clubs and student government and this participation component. That was something that you had said early on that you were.
Yeah, specifically the senior class has been, it's hard to get some people involved, but I think there's been more involvement recently, so that's good.
Okay, good.
Yeah. And then the last thing that's happening, like, I guess soon would be the end of October, there's going to be a blood drive. So I want to remark on that as well.
Okay. Remind us again in October if we have a, hopefully we have a board meeting right before then. Any questions for the student representative?
Did I hear that? Did you say Ken and Barbie Day?
Yeah, the Barbie movie is like a big thing.
That sounds really innovative.
My, my kids bought like wardrobe for this day.
Are you going beaching, Dr. Angelo?
No, I just, I thought I heard that, right? My hearing's not that great, so I had to do a double take. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Time for the superintendent's update.
Well, I'm just disappointed I didn't think of Ken and Barbie Day, but now I guess I'm wrong. But I'd like to invite Justin, I think you're going to join us for a few brief moments. I know I did have a question from at least one board member. As you know, I think, I think as you know, we've made some changes to the cell phone policy. We are not alone. You're seeing this throughout the region and throughout the country. And I thought I'd invite Justin to just give you a couple of moments in terms of what, an overview of the new expectations that we have at the high school and kind of a few weeks in how it's going. I've talked to a few teachers.
So before
Oh, yes, I know where you're going to go with that. We, sorry about that. We use that word sometimes in school loosely, policy. This is not, this is a new cell phone guidelines at the high school. Policy is reserved for board action. So we've got to be careful with that, using that synonymously. So I do apologize. Could you share with us the new cell phone practices and guidelines at the high school?
Sure. You know, the cell phone issues have been building up since cell phones have been around, especially with smartphones. You know, we've got lots of conversations in school with students, with parents, with teachers. We started up a think tank this summer for the high school, and, you know, we established a number of different priorities. And this one, the kind of was the cream that came to the top. So a group of teachers, administration, guidance counselors, they said, well, let's work on, you know, a cell phone guidance or guidelines. We looked at a few things, you know, social, emotional wellness, engagement in school. We also talked about, you know, disciplinary students using cell phones to, you know, for reasons that they shouldn't be, especially in school. So, you know, we, we had some discussion and we came up with a plan that cell phones are not to be visible in instructional spaces. Cell phones can be out and used during in-between classes, during regular study halls and during lunch. But in classrooms, the library, structured study halls, they're not to be out. So far, it's going very well. When we talked over the summer, you know, everybody's saying, you know, Justin, this is going to be horrible for you. You're going to have 50 on the first day. So we're, you know, over two weeks in, and we've had 13 cell phones surrendered. And actually, one of those, there was a substitute in, and three, three students had their phone out in that one class because they thought they could get away with it. So there was three right off of that. Very minimal pushback from students. There was, there's been two students where, you know, we had to, you know, they didn't want to surrender it, but the, we called home. And the parents were very supportive and, you know, had their students, you know, hand over the, hand over the phones. Logistically, you know, basically the first time is a warning. You have to surrender your phone anytime it's out. And then it like progressively, progressively builds up to, you know, detentions and referrals, to parent meeting, to loss of phone for a week, to loss of phone for five weeks, for loss of phone to, you know, indefinite.
When you say loss of phone, how does that, who governs that?
So what we do is the student has a phone out in class, they are asked to go down to the office. We have a log that we keep and we have, it's like a shoe rack that cell phones will fit in. But we also have envelopes that fit smartphones, and we put a, like a label across the, where the glue is, and they have to sign over it. So that way, there's no issues with, oh, they went through my phone while, you know, we're protecting the integrity of the phone. At the end of the day, they're able to come, they come down to the office, they pick it up, and they go on their way. So is that, but for a longer revocation of privilege around that, is that phone, is that, is that the responsibility of the parents at home? Or do the kids, because you can't keep, I would imagine you can't keep a phone for five weeks in the school. Oh, right, yeah. So they would still pick it up every day. So we have one student right now for a different instance. Every morning he surrenders his phone, and then he picks it up just because at the end of the day, sometimes he has to call home to get a ride. So he's able to bring it in for communication purposes before school and after, but while he's in the building, it's kept in the office. So, and I know, Chris, you're sitting at the mics. I think you probably have a question. I just have one more. It came up in a conversation, a casual conversation I was having with somebody that said that they were concerned, and I can see the concern. Their child said that now everybody walks around the halls with their heads down. Do you think that this is, is there an impact on the socialization of students and almost an inadvertent or unanticipated impact on the socializations of students? Because at their free times, is there an increase in isolation? So actually, no. What I, you know, I'm in the cafeteria a lot, and I'm in the hallways almost between every period. In the cafeteria, it's actually been way more social. There's less phone usage in the hallways too. It's not, I don't notice anything different, but definitely the cafeteria, I see more socialization than I had in the past. I've been in a few classrooms, and the engagement in the classroom is by far better. One of the students that had an issue with taking, thus taking the phone, she actually made a comment that said that she liked the cell phone policy. I shouldn't say that. She doesn't like the cell phone policy, but she admitted that she was more engaged in class. I was like, wow, okay, this is a step in the right direction. Thank you. Chris, you have a question?
Yeah. Can you walk us through, maybe like a day in the life of a student arriving to school and how, what they do with their phone and when, and how it works, like literally, what are they, you know, what are they doing with their phone?
Um, you know, so generally, you know, lots of times in between, those are before classes began, before homeroom. They're not allowed in homeroom either.
But when you say not allowed, that's what I'm trying to understand. What are they doing with their phone?
They're, you know, either putting it in their pocket or their backpack, or the signs that are posted are phones are not to be visible beyond this point.
So it's on their body still, it's just not out?
It's a usage practice. Correct. And I want to bring something else up. There are probably five or six of our, you know, offenders. You know, they came in, you know, maybe they came in from the bathroom, and they were looking to sign in and like, oh, you got me. You know, just thought I had that. I think we all tend to do that.
Okay, so this is the policy of, basically, if I could summarize it and, you know, dumb it down, don't take your phone out. You're not supposed to take your phone out in these instances.
Correct.
And that's pretty much it. And these are the, what happens if you do.
Yep.
And based on that, you're getting that much response. Like people are actually, students are actually
Yep.
Responding.
Yep. And I think another big piece of this too is we, we push this to the adults as well. If you're monitoring a study hall, if you're, even if you're not teaching in class, somebody else is teaching in your classroom. We ask them to step out of that room because it's an instructional space and they shouldn't have their phone out either. So it's a, it's also a cultural thing, you know, who did, we're all this together, students, adults, et cetera.
That's good.
It was time, right? And I think everybody is appreciating the refocus on why we're here.
Yep.
I also have to say that on day two, when that young man brought in his bag phone to surrender to you, you didn't fall for that.
That's right.
Some of you are old enough.
I, I heard a story in a different district that where I shouldn't give our students any ideas, but they, someone forfeited a
Burner phone?
A burner, no, a TV remote.
Yeah. The
Practice are sometimes only as good as the practitioner.
Right. So the ThingTang Blue Meeting, and I'm sure this is just beginning, you know, things are going to happen. We'll have to tweak and figure it out, but so far, still good.
So
Sorry.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is great, first of all. I wish you luck in your endeavor as the entirety of the tech industry is working against you. Because they all report to public stockholders who insist you have to make these apps as addictive as possible. Some education about that fact and the types of steps you can take, like turning off notifications, being in silent mode, stuff, being selective about notifications that can reduce that addiction might be required for long-term survival of this type of guidance. I'm not, this is going to be hard to sustain. And I, that's why I'm wishing you luck.
Yeah, thank you. I'm a little surprised, I guess, pleasantly perhaps, that the parents are receptive. From my experience, they can, they can be very challenging. Yeah. Having been in your role. You know, that's, one of the parents actually said, well, then I'm going to have to come down there and take it from you. So you won't surrender it. And you said, that's exactly what I want you to do. To take it home. But no, it's been supportive.
So this is just in the high school?
Yep. Something similar, I believe is.
It was similar, but you're not allowed to have a talk. Yeah. Refining, mainly talks at lunchtime, and kids are talking again, socializing.
Wonderful. That's great. It's great. Great.
Our last meeting, we had a really interesting conversation about board goals and looking at metrics. I can see, you know, the easy ones are academics, right? Are we seeing grades improve because we're getting greater focus in classrooms? I could see, are we seeing better engagement in the clubs and student, you know, sort of functional positions? What would you, what are you going to be looking at? What are you thinking of in terms of metrics going forward to see how this works and how how you can sustain it or even improve it over time? You know, we haven't, we haven't dug that deep into it, but obviously, you know, the grading. One of the big concerns for me is the, the mental health. How to assess that, you know, I guess is a little TBD right now. All right. I'd love to hear that as we go forward. I think that that's, you know, I know you're both as professionals, so I'm interested to hear what your insights are on that going forward. Yeah. That's a good metric to look at too, yeah. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Really appreciate it.
My computer went to sleep. Hold on.
The only other thing that I have for you is just a very, very general 10,000-foot kind of comment. And just to reassure the board that whenever, whenever the district goes through something that has an incident related to it, that we welcome parent feedback. I do receive calls and emails. And that I want to reassure parents and my board that we do everything within our power to make sure that our students are safe from the moment they get on our transportation to the moment they from the moment they get on our transportation to the moment they, um, um, arrive home. So, um, please know that, um, any incident is taken extremely serious by the entire administrative staff. Uh, it's thoroughly investigated and we put corrective actions in place so that, um, when unforeseen things occur, we can assure each other that they don't reoccur if it's within our control. So just wanted to make that general comment.
Okay. I think we have the, uh, academic update, uh, Dr. Root.
I'll keep my comments brief since we had the American Institutes of Research on New York kids come in. Um, I did just want to quickly mention that, um, we had several listening sessions with, uh, some with students, some with teachers, um, who represented committees, focus groups that we had last year. Um, as well as some administrators and just had a listening session with our guests earlier and, um, it was really powerful to hear what students had to say about their experience of the pandemic. Um, and I, I think that we often look at the aftereffect and we're still thinking about it and digesting it. Um, but to hear from students, um, what teachers did for them during, uh, the space of time. I think we all felt like we couldn't do enough and, um, it was some, some really positive comments that came forward about, uh, teachers and how impactful teachers were for them during that time. So, um, again, you'll get more information as we collect more, more data and, um, bring that forth to you. I did want to briefly mention that, um, they're still embargoed, but we do have our three through eight assessments and, um, we are also now, um, embarking, um, in the midst of with elementary and middle school um, on benchmark assessments. So I'd like to put those two together, um, and we'll, we'll find a over the next couple of meetings, find a, an opportunity to present, um, that data and give a sense of uh, where our kids are at right now and, um, some strategies for this year. So that's upcoming.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Trudy, Chuddy with the, uh, operational update?
Not much on the operational side. Um, just getting ready, you know, the maintenance, everyone's working for homecoming. I want to see the grounds in excellent condition. You know, we got all the vents Friday and Saturday. Uh, I do want to thank the maintenance staff yesterday. Girls had a huge soccer game at home against Maple Hill and, uh, it rained a weekend and it rained a lot of the day and we got the game and, um, they went out a few hours before and put that speedy dry stuff in the goal boxes and line the field. And actually we got, you know, the field was great for, to be able to play on. So, and our girls did win four oh, so that was a huge win, but I'm happy they, the other, Maple had to cancel. So most area schools had to cancel their soccer. We were able to have it. So I want to thank the hard work they put in for that.
Did we play that on our varsity soccer field?
Yeah.
Like to, it's, it's not a new business section, but I'd like to be reminded if I can, when we get to new business, um, we invest a lot of money in our sports programs, at least if it goes to soccer. Uh, but, but I think that, uh, our, our girls and our boys over the years have proven that they deserve a little acknowledgement, a little work on that. So, um, so thank you. Also, Facebook, go on Facebook and vote for Mariana Chuddy for Athleta.
We can only do it once, right?
Uh, it depends how many, yeah, of course. Mike has lollipops if you vote yes.
Email accounts and then.
Oh, hey.
Just, just one quick question. Um, the speaker, um, for football, was that fixed? It was all distorted, uh, last week. Did they fix that?
I will check on that. I actually missed that last game. So I'll make sure for homecoming that, that is fixed.
Yeah, it was really distorted.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Okay, uh, I think we go on to board committee reports. Uh, public library advisory committee, we did hear from the C-Plaque folks, but is there anything that the committee wants to, uh, include?
Well, we, we did have a meeting, uh, elected officers. There are, there are 24 scheduled events at our library at the month of October. I'm telling you.
I thought you were going to say for the year.
For the month of October. Go on the website and take a look. This place is, uh, it's wonderful. It's just wonderful. Uh, summer was very busy. Um, both in Chatham and Canaan, probably the highlight of the summer was again, she had the Gant band come and do a concert. We had over a hundred people there at the concert. Um, strategic planning, as John said, we're, um, starting that and I have such a good feeling about this. I went through strategic planning with the library probably five years ago. This one is, I have a much different feeling about it. It's going to be, um, we're also going to use the staff. And it's going to be just, I think it's going to be great. It's going to happen. It's going to happen. Friends of the library are very big contributors. They bought some lovely furniture. And if you get a chance, go in and look at the married artist desk. The, um, at the, they moved married artists, this big desk in the library. It's a wonderful addition and we're glad to have it there. That's it.
Okay. I think we had a photo posted on our website with the desk.
Yes.
Uh, audit committee?
Well, we met for the
Are you on?
First.
We met for the first and probably only time, uh, this year to cover last year's finances, uh, the, the, um, uh, on the financial statements as well as, uh, the, uh, response to the controller audit and the, the findings there. Um, we made some recommendations. I think we've, uh, gone over everything today. Um, unless there's a new audit, um, something ad hoc that comes up, um, we will not be meeting again until next season.
Actually, Matt, we will meet for, uh, the external audits every five years and then you have to come up and do an RP. So in February, February, we will be meeting again.
Yep. Okay. So, not until February.
All right. Thank you. Uh, new business. Uh, so, uh, first on the, uh, list here is discussion of NISBA resolutions and voting delegates. So I did send an email out to everybody, um, with the link and sort of Debbie, um, so that we could uh, take a look at what those resolutions are. Uh, I did get some feedback from some. Mary Ann, did you want to speak to some of the ones that you had brought out?
I, I have one comment.
Go ahead, Matt.
For any board member that has not participated in this process before, I highly recommend it. Um, but other than that, I don't have an opinion on the proposals.
So Mary Ann had sent me the email. Looking for it now.
Okay. I just basically wrote, read through.
I read through all of the resolutions. Um, proposal number one, um, which opposes unfunded mandates. That's a slam dunk. I think everybody should support that. Um, when they pass down things that they don't actually follow up any money for and say, you have to do this and don't come up with the money for it. I really think that should be something that everybody would be on board with. Um, the other one that stood out to me was the proposed resolution number seven, which opposes shifting financial responsibility for preschool special education from counties to school districts. I wasn't aware of that, uh, that that could happen. Um, and let's see. So this is, these are proposals that NISBA supports, which I agree with. Um, resolution 10, legislation that would substantially increase the earning limitations for retired police and other law enforcement for serving as school resource or safety officers. I thought that was a unique idea. Um, there's always that challenge of finding a school resource officer. The, you know, every time we go back to the county, um, they're having trouble finding people that can fill that role. Um, I know we're okay right now, but I think it'd be a great idea if you had a retired person that, um, you know, they have all the skill sets and the time. Um, so I, I think that's a great resolution.
The county pays half of ours. The county pays half.
Right, right. But so, so once you retire from the, um, from the government, yeah, you have earnings limitations. You can't go find another job. And, and so this is wants to increase that so that they would be more attracted to the idea of, of jumping into a role like that. I just, I just thought that was interesting, but these are all my personal opinions. I'm just, I'm just relating that. Um, resolution 18, state support of local grow your own teaching programs. Um, I think that is going to be important. We are having problems finding teachers and if the state could help local school districts, um, help with some of the funding of that to get local people interested in, um, in helping out at their school districts. I thought that was great. Um,
It's generally just for your, for your information also occurring at the BOSI's level. Um, there's a lot of, um, advantages to have it be more regional, but certainly keeping it more localized.
Yeah, I, I think that's great. And I'll grow your own is, is a great concept. Um, let's see. Okay. Resolution 19 was for the state to conduct a feasibility study or review regarding utilities, infrastructure, logistical and fiscal aspects of zero emission school vehicle mandate as the reviews and studies deem necessary. Um, I think that's excellent because they kind of said, hey, we're doing this, uh, you guys figure it out. I really think the state should get involved and say, how is this actually feasible and relieve some of the burden of the school districts of trying to take this idea and, uh, figure it out on their own. The state should jump in and definitely help with that. So I agree with NISBA on that one. Um, I don't know. I don't know how I feel about this one. The resolution 20 was to eliminate the regions in favor of state final exams. Um, don't have an opinion on that. I need a lot more information to actually think about that, but I just flagged that because that's kind of an interesting discussion, probably something that we'll be talking about at length. Lisa, I'm sure has opinions on that too. Um, resolution 43. So the NISBA committee opposed this one, but I think they make a good point. Uh, it's talking about the tier six and the teacher's retirement system should be modified. Um, I am very new at this whole system, uh, but it did look on the, you know, the surface to me, the tier six, you, it was not great. And if we're trying to get some of these teachers in here, um, we should probably look at that. But again, I'm speaking from having no idea. This is just how it was presented. Thought that was interesting. Um, okay. So the committee, uh, resolution 46, um, the NISBA committee opposes this, uh, but they brought up this idea of returning the religious exemption uh, for the vaccines. Um, and you know, as you guys well know from my past, I'm all about parental rights and, you know, so I, I did not agree with committee, but this is again, my personal opinion. They also oppose the parental rights legislation. They oppose number 48, uh, mandates from the, uh, school edu- state education department regarding matters not pertaining to academic standards. Subjects that have not been approved by up and down vote of the New York State Legislature. I don't even understand my note on that. Um, they oppose local control by school boards. I don't know what that would look like, but that's something I would like to love to look into a little bit more. And we just here we are. We know our town. We know our community. So that was resolution number 49.
Local control in regards to.
Yeah, uh, and or county executive. So, um, that was just a Cliff note I had. Okay. So those were the ones, those are the ones that I just earmarked that I thought that we would find interesting here in Chatham.
So, so when these, um, it, this is not at the conference. They're doing this virtual again, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So any, almost anyone can propose something to get on this list. Um, it's a very short, uh, list of, um, you know, the petition requirement is very short to get on the list. So there's a lot of strange positions, um, that they just don't pass. But if no one shows up to vote for them, um, you know, these end up being lobbying priorities for, for NISBA. Um, it's important to make sure the positions, uh, well thought through. And there's supposed to be debate, although when I went to the virtual one, um, it, there was not a real opportunity to speak your mind on these. So all you've really got is that vote.
That's true. I, I would agree with that. I did virtual also and it was.
I think when these were in person, people would get up and speak and it was like, there was a lot of feedback, but.
I had, um, my, well, I, I read yours, Mary Ann, and, and, you know, uh, agreed with some of your perspectives, uh, agreed with many of them. Um, had some questions like you did, especially around the local control one. Um, I also thought that, uh, resolution number four, uh, five, um, where the school boards association supports the additional state and federal funding, which would be dedicated to school safety programs, staff and equipment. Um, I, I think that that's a, the thing that we have to really, I, I would suggest we support. It's going to, it costs money. And it's, it's essentially an unfunded mandate. It's a moral one. It's an ethical one, but it's certainly costs money. Um, so while we would do best for our kids, no matter what, I think it's kind of a twist of the arm for the state to, uh, make, uh, to propose leverage and, and not support it financially. Anybody else on the? Chad? Uh, so we do have, um, an opportunity to have, uh, voting delegates. Um, so, uh, R23, be it res- uh, resolved at the Board of Education designate. Uh, do we have anybody interested?
Uh, we can only send one delegate to vote. Yeah.
I mean, I, I had in my email, I had said that I would be willing.
Yes.
Um, so I, I, I don't know if, uh, how we want to go about doing that. I don't want to assume anything. Um, but we should have a delegate. I'm sure we have a few people that might be interested. Sounds like both Chris and Matt have been before. Um, I would guess that one or both people would be interested. So, um, but I don't know. Maybe I'm wrong.
Um, so, yeah.
Is anybody else interested?
I, I think, I think for me, um, being that the, um, there's not a great opportunity to, um, communicate your viewpoint unless you participated in the early efforts to put statements on file, right? Cause you can put a, not only do you put the proposal, but, um, sometimes people have alternate positions on that proposal. So when those get put in writing, they get circulated and I think those are really powerful. Being that this is just a basically up or down vote on each one. I don't think that there's a lot of value, um, to me as, or, or really to the local district here. These are going to pass, they're going to fail and it's probably not going to come down to one vote. However, I think for new board members, um, the amount of the education you get on the diversity of viewpoints and the, um, diversity of issues that are being lobbied around the state is really valuable. So like I said, I think that if we can get the new board members through that at least once, super valuable. Um, if we don't find new board members that want to do it, I'm not sure representation is that important to Chatham.
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't know. I think, um, when you think about resolution number 49, not sending a delegate is, is silently accepting the limitations of local controls. Uh, and, you know, this is the last place where the community has direct vote. Um, and the last pit place where, where, where we impact your own, um, directly. So I, I, I think I disagree with that point. I think it's always good to have a delegate on there. Um, it may not be, uh, a powerful statement, um, but it's not silence either. So, um, and I, I Dawn's our newest member. Um, I also have not done it. I don't think Mary Ann has done it. Um, so.
Uh, yeah.
So would anybody else be interested?
I think, I think since you have offered, we would like to take you up on it if you're willing to do it.
It's, it's like a 60 minute slot or something like that. It's longer.
I think it's longer than that.
Yeah, I'm sure it is. Yeah. There's a lot in that, in that resolution.
It's longer than that.
You have the time to do it.
Yeah, I'll make the time for it. Uh, so be resolved that the Board of Education designate Fred Hutchinson as the voting delegate and as the alternative for the annual business meeting of the New York State Boards Association. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And he put, I probably should say aye at that point, but. All right. So we are into new business. Uh, we have a motion to approve the, uh, MOA with the Chatham Central School Teachers Association dated September 12th, 2023. The MOA is in executive content. And patched. Um, this one is, oh, this has to do with the high school schedule change and the number of, uh, minutes of instructional minutes. Um, as many know, last year we ran close uh, because of various, uh, things beyond our control. We lost power for several days early on in the year. Uh, the weather didn't cooperate with us as well as you may have wanted to. Um, and so we, I believe the district has chosen to change the schedule just a little bit to ensure that we have those extra minutes. Uh, so build a little buffer in there. Am I explaining this right? Yeah, the, um, instructional minutes were changed, uh, in alignment with the CCSTA contract of 42 minutes per period. But then that created an unintended consequence. The supervisory period had a discrete number of 41 minutes listed in the contract. So there was, uh, there was a lack of, um, consistency there. So this MOA allows us to increase the supervi-
allows us to increase the supervisory, um, period to match an instructional period. And, uh, and we're going to keep a close eye on this, um, the CCSTA asked that we, you know, take a look at this about twenty-week mark to make sure everything was going okay. Is that?
I just have a question on it. I'm, I'm just curious, how was that picked up? It's like a seems like a minutia of a detail. I mean, it's just wondering.
Uh, some teachers are very focused on their, their prep time. Um, they're like one of the only things they care about in the contract.
Well, I also think you'd end up with unsupervised students for, you know, eight minutes in a day.
Yeah, I, it, it wasn't, the, 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 um, language is right next to each other in the contract. So it wasn't, I, I, we were pretty proactive with this.
Yeah.
When we verified that we could make the schedule change without a contractual negotiation for the instructional minutes, we realized that we were going to then impact the supervisory minutes. And, um, we approached the CCSTA who's been extraordinarily cooperative with us and always is. And, uh, to come to a mutual agreement and a solution that doesn't negatively impact students.
Did we do this on our own with our, um, teachers union? We didn't have outsiders.
Oh, no. Many of the MOAs, um, are a discussion, uh, this year, um, our Conley is the president, Sarah Murray is the vice president. Uh, I meet with them on a regular basis. We met today. And, uh, you know, we go over, um, certainly, certainly we go over any labor concerns and this is course of doing business. For the most part, we, we take a crack at writing the MOA and then we have our legal counsel just verify that we're we're doing well.
So do I, can I get a motion to approve the MOA?
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Uh, any further questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Uh, any opposed? Uh, we have a second, uh, MOA with the, uh, Chatham Central School Teachers Association. Um, this one is I'm gonna close some windows here. You got losses. Yes, this is the, in relationship to the dean of students at the MED. Dean of students at the MED.
Cre- creating the temporary dean of students.
Right. We had discussed, uh, we had a conversation about, um, viability of hiring a vice principal at this point. Um, and elected to go as a board, uh, we discussed mostly in favor. Don, I don't think you were there for that one, but, um, you were here for this. Um, and then, um, to go with the dean of students, uh, which we had done in, in the past, it worked out pretty well. So this is a motion to approve that. Uh, the document is in the, uh, notes. But essentially the MED dean of students shall be paid, um, eighteen point four percent of the, of BA. What is that? Bachelor's Step One. Thank you. Um, prorated for the time worked upon appointment of the association unit member to the position of MED dean of students, such employee will be granted leave of absence from his or her current position to which he or she shall return at the conclusion of the temporary appointment. The association member will retain his or her tenure and continue to act, uh, accrue seniority in his or her current tenure area while acting as the toast of dean of students. The MOA shall sunset upon the termination of temporary employment tur- or appointment term, um, but no later than June twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. Uh, are there any questions?
The only thing to note is that, that compensation percentage is consistent with the pre-existing percentages that are in place in the contract for both the middle school dean, which is currently not a position that we have, and, um, a high school dean should we, both positions which we currently don't have.
Okay. Uh, can I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Uh, any, no further questions, I guess. Uh, any, all, all in agreement?
Hi.
Hi.
Uh, any opposed?
Alright, pause just for one second. It reminded me that I just wanted to shout out to Stacy Moscato, who's served as our, uh, assistant principal at MED this past year. We're grateful for your work. We thank you and we wish you well in your new district. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, and, um, it looks like we have a, uh, an agreement with the administrators unit. Uh, so motion to be resolved that the Board of Education approve the agreement with Chatham Central School Principals Association for Collective Bargaining Agreement for the period of July one, two thousand twenty-three through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven. It authorizes superintendent to execute the agreement and approve the payment of money provided therein, and that agreement is, uh, also in our notes.
Motion. Second.
Thank you. Uh, any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? We are on to consensus agenda. Motion to accept the consensus agenda K through M. Are there any questions on the agenda that are in relationship to the agenda for many board members?
I have one related question. Sal, can you just sum up for us our current staffing situation for Spanish, just K twelve? Because I see that this was a, a long-term sub and that had escaped me, um, in my memory.
Um, it was a long-term sub because that individual, um, was in the process of receiving certification.
Okay.
So they could not be appointed. They've been with us, I think, now four years. Um, they've moved on to an, another district. Um, we have posted that position. Uh, that position is for, uh, the middle school. I think it's grade seven, eight. We offer, um, kind of a stretch Spanish, um, alternative and, um, as you probably are anticipating, um, I don't believe we had any viable candidates uh, in a loss at this point, so we will continue to search for a certified, certified or close to being certified Spanish teacher. Very, very hard to fill area.
Are we using any other search sites like Indeed or any of the others that are out there for stuff?
We, um, not Indeed specifically, but we've, um, at various times, depending on the position, so instructionally, um, there's some others that that we were investigating, that we've seen other districts use. Uh, the, 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 the secondary one escapes me, but, um, one of the things we've done with the non-instructional areas is we've been reaching out to, um, places like, uh, Columbia Marine Community College and some of the other, uh, affiliate programs that are graduating students and are offering, um, uh, courses within those areas. So we're, I won't say that's an extensive recruitment effort, but we're trying to get the word out there in other places.
So on, on October sixth, um, which is rapidly approaching, um, presuming nothing changes from today. Uh, we're in just building sub-territory?
We're also exploring, um, and, and, and there's some challenges fraught with this as well, but we're also exploring what distance learning options we may have, um, for Spanish. They were coming, I won't say more plentiful, but they're, they're, they're starting to pop up. West Star is starting to offer, um, a Spanish, um, program. Unfortunately, I believe that's uh, Spanish one, so it's kind of slated for the high school. This is a unique situation where we teach Spanish one over a two-year period, so it, it, it's kind of unique to, uh, middle school. Um, Dr. Root, I don't know if you have any other tricks in your bag. We've had conversations with Capital Region, um, Distance Learning Consortium. Uh, you've heard me mention in the past, um, Burn Hills, um, has had some good, um, luck with, uh, generating some programming um, from that school to other schools. But again, some of the challenges are relate to high school schedules and aligning schedules. There's a pilot program going down in the Capital Region where several districts have um, put together concerted effort to align their building schedules so that they could take advantage of more distance learning offerings. And so all that's kind of evolving as this teacher shortage is, um, at our, at our doorstep. And we're looking for alternatives to, you know, in-person and, um, certified, certificated individuals in our classroom. So I danced around that for sure. Um, because I just don't have a really good answer.
To, to be continued. Got it.
Yeah, but we actually, it sounds like our worst case scenario would be compressing that stretch program into a single year.
I, I, I think, uh, right now, I'm not sure what all, all of our alternatives are. Um, I, I'm a little reluctant in, um, offering a Spanish one program at the middle level as to whether our students would be, um, prepared for, for that kind of rigor, if you will.
Yeah, we wouldn't be the only school and it's better, I guess, than not offering it.
Yeah. So.
I'm curious, um, what the viability of moving Spanish one to seventh? Is there a reason why it's, is there, is there a, a fundamental like curriculum-related reason why this is stretched over two years?
Well, I, I mean, typically, um, our accelerated program has traditionally been, um, math and science, so you know, offering earth science and, uh, algebra in eighth grade. Um, I'm not quite sure why, um, Spanish was split over two years. Is it the credit?
I'm thinking back to a time, this, this program was introduced at a time when Spanish was not a second language in the United States. And it now has twenty-five percent home adoption. Um, and I'm not sure that that, whatever assumption was brought to the table at that time is still that, is still valid.
There is a state graduation requirement for foreign language and it involves Spanish one. Dr. Root, do you want to talk about that a little bit or? It doesn't answer the stretch question. But I assume that the stretching, whenever we stretch a curriculum, it's to try and make it, um, more palatable and digestible by, for students. Um, teach it slower, get it deeper sort of thing.
But.
Um, but, did you want to address it? So I think, um, Matt's question about why it was a stretch program.
Let, let, let me clarify. It's clear to me, earlier is better for language adoption.
Mm-hmm.
And moving all of one into seventh grade would mean two could get moved into eighth grade. And it would mean that they'd reach Spanish four or five earlier in the high school, leaving more time for electives. So I'm, I'm wondering if there's an actual programmatic reason for the stretch because I'm not convinced that it, the kids need two years to achieve a vocab list that's like really short.
I think that's something we could explore and get back to. Um, you know, I see that Mr. Fortran is on the call. I, I do also want to mention that, um, we've had conversations and he's reached out to some teachers, um, some former teachers that have worked for us, retired teachers, um, you know, we're, we're pulling out, um, uh, all the tricks in the bag to see if we can, um, adequately staff that, that position. But one, your question is very valid and, and we should explore it, at least investigate uh, what that might look like. Uh, Mr. Sid, I don't know. Do you have any, any insight, um? So I mean, we do have a teacher leader for, um, uh, Lo and, uh, E and L, and you know, we can consult. And, um, and I can get you some better answers than I can give you today.
Yeah, I mean, there's tons of research that every year that goes on as a teenager, that you delay language introduction. It's exponentially more difficult to acquire.
Yeah.
So I'm not convinced that the idea that stretch makes it easier. It would be very hard to, to, when there's all this data that says the opposite.
Yeah, well, it, it, there's data for stretch programs that, that say, that, that agree with the idea of stretching, whether it's applicable to the foreign language. I think the only prohibitive thing I could see at this point would be that it would open up the need for additional staff, which we're having trouble doing. Because what you're suggesting is.
Same number of classes, isn't it?
We can't fill those now. Like, we don't, we can't staff them right now.
No, I think what Matt is saying, and I, and I, as I understand it, is if we had one Spanish teacher at the middle school who's teaching, right now teaching.
Seventh and eighth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, what does that look like from a scheduling perspective? I don't know what limitations we might bump into in terms of what, you know, periods we're trying to fill there.
I, I'm not sure how Spanish half one and Spanish half two is different than Spanish one and two.
I don't think it, I, I don't think that that substantially is. I just think that we're getting a resignation from a long-term sub from.
No, no, I just want to take a moment because
And we don't have applicants.
The reasoning behind this programming is probably twenty-five, thirty years out of date.
I, I don't think that, yeah, that's absolutely heard loud and clear and, you know, Mike.
Great.
Lisa, myself, I think we all agree philosophically with it. I think the only prohibitive aspect would be the fact that we don't have an applicant for a position.
Right.
Around it at the moment.
We certainly can do some more. Wait, we're kind.
Oh, that, that was the only question.
Okay, alright, so anybody else have questions on the consensus agenda? Uh, so, um, motion, uh, rather, R twenty-seven be resolved, the Board of Education accept the consensus agenda K through M as written. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Uh, uh, we did questions, uh, all in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? Okay. Uh, motion to accept the, uh, minutes from the September twelfth board meeting?
Motion.
Second.
That's part of the consensus. I do that every time, don't I, then? Okay, so I pick it up at N, right? Okay. Uh, future agenda items. So as I said earlier, I would like to add one and I would like to have, uh, some sort of a study perspectus on, um, upgrading our, our soccer program. Um, we have beautiful fields, uh, for both baseball and football. Uh, we have a good, we've done some work on the softball field. Our gym is more than sufficient for volleyball and, and basketball. I think it's time to take a look at soccer.
Uh, can I suggest that we'll bring that to the facilities committee? Uh, we're, we're, I think we're in the process of um, establishing a meeting for next week. Um, I'm going to bring your request to them for consideration.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody else have any future agenda items?
You're going to get a new soccer field.
Yes.
How about getting a classroom for our orchestra teacher? Well, they haven't had a, that's just, you know, that's a, a thorn in my side. We have never had a our orchestra teacher has a room backstage in the corner, but maybe during this construction, we may find a place for him.
Okay, alright, so is that, do you want that added to a future agenda item? Or tabled after the, um, okay, ta- taking the facilities, very good. Anyone else? Okay, uh, we are back to second public comment.
Um, we have a, a virtual, uh, Jen Diorio has raised her hand and Sandy Fisher.
Okay, great.
So I'll begin with Jen. I'm going to promote you in a second here. Hopefully our technology works. Magic of TV. Jen, you should be able to hear us and where did you go?
Ah, there we go.
It's, uh, hi everybody. It, it's been so long since I've used Zoom, almost thankfully, that I kind of forgot what buttons to push here. Um, so just a couple of things. I just wanted to, to briefly comment on the, on the cell phone conversation that, uh, Justin's presentation and the and conversation that ensued. Um, just a couple of, of observations from a teacher perspective. One is that I think heads were always down in hallways on cell phones even prior to this, this change in, in procedure. Um, I haven't seen it get any worse, but what I have seen get better is, um, engagement and attentiveness and focus in class. And I know that in my classroom, if there's an extra few minutes at the end of the period, when every kid would have whipped their cell phone out and started to engage with that, since there are no cell phones that are allowed to come out physically within the academic uh, setup, uh, they turn around and talk to each other now. So in those few minutes of the day, it's actually increased socialization, uh, student to student. Um, and the other thing, because I know you guys love data. Um, I really like to survey my students and I've done so at the end of the year for the last two years. And I'll give you the exact wording of the question I've asked them. So my classes are Algebra Two and Consumer Math, so it spans sophomores through seniors and high achieving and not as high achieving academic students. The question I specifically asked them is, quote, "I'm pretty tough on cell phone use in class." Do you think not accessing it in class improved your focus, your understanding and retention of the material in class? I have kind of always had a very strict no-cell phone policy in my classroom that I, I chose to enforce. Uh, but I think the kids' answers, I know they surprised me, I think they might surprise you as well in terms of their perspective. Um, their choices were no difference, some difference, quite a difference, and a significant difference. Only eighteen percent of my students over two years, and I surveyed about a hundred and twenty-five students in that time, said it made no difference. Twenty percent said some difference, twenty-eight percent said quite a difference, and thirty-four percent said that cell phone policy made a significant difference in their focus, understanding and retention of material. So even the kids were saying, um, that they were not helping. Um, and I've just, I, I've been really happy to see this policy. I've heard not a lot of, not, I personally haven't heard a lot of complaints about it. And I am just seeing tons of positives and I just wanted to share that with you all.
That's awesome. Thank you, Jen. And we're going to return Jen to the gallery.
And we're gonna return Jen to the gallery. Don't be offended by being demoted to a attendee. And we're gonna try to work on getting Sandy. And. Well. Sandy, you're um, you're up, but your video is muted. I don't know if that's intentionally on, but you're.
Yeah. You can hear me. Okay, it's my privacy setting and I don't know that I can fix it quickly. Um, so I'm just gonna start talking. Uh, I, cause I have a long list. Uh, number one, um, the Chatham Education Foundation is meeting next week. And uh, we are really excited to see what projects uh the teachers are gonna bring to us this year. Um, so stay tuned for, for more exciting news about that. One of the projects that they funded last year was the Skydome Planetarium, which Megan Perry wrote uh as her grant. And the Skydome Planetarium is going to be at the middle school tomorrow. Uh, and grades six through eight will be partaking in that as well as my ninth grade Sciencelings class. Uh, so that's very exciting. Um, so one, two, oh, number three, the microphones are fantastic. It can hear everybody and uh that, that's great. Nobody was dropping off into the, into the uh abyss of, of quietness. So I love the new microphones. Thank you, Harris. Uh, number four, Chatham Robotics has expanded. Um, I don't know if, if you guys have, have caught wind of it yet, but my team last year advocated for and promised to be the mentors of the first tech challenge, which is the next lower level of the robotics uh for grade seven and eight. So we've started that program. Kate Rossi, who is a math teacher at that school, it's, sorry for my dogs, that's a foster dog, he wants to adopt one. I'm gonna go outside. Kate. Kate Rossi, uh, the math teacher at the high school is going to be leading the charge on the first tech challenge. Uh, so you'll get to see another robot. Um, and we'll be doing competitions probably in December and January for that. And uh also if anyone's around and wants to hang out in Boston Spa on the first Saturday in November, I think it's the fourth. The robotics team will be up there with our robot from last year and hopefully a new Swerve drive. Uh, we received a grant from IBM and some additional funding so that we can upgrade our drive train to uh the Swerve wheels, which I talked about at the board meeting when we were there last spring, which will make us more competitive, which is hugely important if, if we want to advance to the next level. Um, what else? Oh, uh, next week, next Thursday is Day in the Life of the Hudson, also known as Snapshot Day. And that is in its twentieth year, I believe, and it, it'll be the fifteenth or sixteenth year that Chatham participates. That's a citizen science program where students all along the Hudson River from the Troy Dam down to Manhattan, usually over three thousand students are out on the Hudson River collecting water quality, they're standing for fish, they're doing site assessments. And all that data goes into the Lamont Doherty Observatory, uh, and all that data is available online and is used to, to help um steer the direction of the Hudson River. And lastly, the uh mock interview event, uh Megan Connolly uh in the senior team um had that initiative last year and it was hugely successful. Uh, we've sent an email out to the participants from last year. And within, I believe it was five hours, fourteen of those people uh responded that they wanted to be participate again this year. Um, it's on uh November ninth, which is the Thursday before Veterans Day. Um, and so stay tuned for more information. We'll be uh soliciting your, your help and uh to make this another hugely successful event.
We had thirty, right? Is that the right number, thirty interviewers? So approximately half have replied and just.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah. And uh, so we're, we're, we're really excited. Um, and, and the students are really excited. So we'll, we're sending out uh invitations or will be, I think, I think Ashley sent an email to uh Adam and.
The board has the same.
Yep, yep. Beautiful, so yeah, so we're.
So, so much support from the community, um, yet again, is, is really great.
Yeah.
I know it was probably unavoidable, but that is also the Veterans Day celebration at the middle school. So there will be a little contention um on a few people, I'm sure.
And then lastly, um, to Matt's point about Spanish. Uh, I'd, I'd be really curious to explore why Spanish isn't pursued more at the elementary level. Um, you know, particularly getting to the fact that the brains are much more malleable for language at the younger ages. Um, and by the time they get to high school, it is much harder. And I, I have four Spanish ELLs and one Indian ELL in my classes this year and, and as a teacher who does not speak Hindi at all and Spanish very minimally. Um, you know, having students come up through programs from elementary school, I think would be a huge benefit uh to our, to our ELL students.
I want to say that in two thousand eight, when I, last time I served on the board, I, we had a conversation about elementary Spanish.
We, while I've been here, we actually um had Jen Powell when she was at the middle school, she had an extra session. And we put together a um uh program that was exploratory. We began, we began in kindergarten and we were going to expand that program. And then Jen left us and kind of, that kind of fell apart. But also that was at the same time where we were starting to be constrained from a budget perspective and we were looking at how we, we needed to reduce um to Mike's earlier point, um potentially up to a million dollars in staffing. So some of those phase ones uh became less uh and, and of course now staffing would be of concern too.
Yeah. Yeah, it's hard to get people, but it's, you know, again, to Matt's point at the end, as Sandy said, you know, it's really the as, as soon as we get them, we should try and, try and teach them as many languages as we possibly can afford to.
And, and not for nothing, um, you know, again, getting to the point that somebody made, you know, you know, if we can be more proactive than reactive, um, I think we'd be, you know, far ahead of the game. And starting languages earlier, I think is a, is a proactive step.
And who would that be? Dr. DeAngelo.
Motion. Second.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. That's it.